Podcasting live at the time we recorded it from the studios in downtown Gulfport, Florida. It's WGAB, the Gabcast.
Welcome back to WGAB, the Gabcast, a Gabber Newspaper production. I'm Patrick Heinzon. I'm a news and politics reporter. And today I'm sitting here finally back with Kathy.
Hello. So I'm Kathy Celestri Loper. I am the owner, publisher, and editor in chief, at least for now, of the Gabber Newspaper. And yes, I took a week off. How dare I?
Well, you took two podcasts off.
Because I trust you.
You shouldn't have.
Although I did leave you alone with city council and look what happened.
Yeah, so that kind of previews it, but today we're going to be talking a little bit about last week's city council meeting on April 2nd and how that all went. And then along with that, some things in the community. So Earth Day and the In Plain Sight event that both happened this past weekend.
All right, let's start with some things that happened at city council.
Yeah.
What the flip, man? What happened?
I mean, getting there, I mean, I get there at 5:30 and I was one of the first people in there. But it filled up so quickly. By six o'clock, there were city staff had given up their seats at their side table. It was just the police chief and me sitting there writing. That was it. And then every seat in the house was filled and there was a crowd spilling far into the hallway. So there was it was bound to be a little energetic, you know?
But they were there for, I assume, a good reason. Were people there to complain? Were they there for the swearing in?
I think, I don't think people were there to complain. Obviously, the public comments section is where people talk about what they have to say in the city. So most of the people were there originally, at least, to see the swearing in ceremony. So
Originally?
I think so. I mean, I heard a lot of comments in the crowd earlier. People were there for the swearing in and they were going to leave, or people were there supporting the candidates. I heard a lot of people specifically talking about April. And both April and Paul were sworn in just to open the meeting. And right after they were sworn in, there was over a minute of applause and cheering and standing ovations. It was very celebratory in there. And then they jumped into their normal, what they do throughout the city council meetings. Although this was the first city council meeting I've seen where there wasn't any resolutions or ordinances or anything. It was just discussion items.
So let's just jump because we're limited on time.
Yeah.
What the hell happened? Because we've got pages in the paper this week.
Yeah.
And it's already live on our website, thegabber.com. And
Well, if you haven't heard about this, because everybody I've spoken to in the city so far has, at the end of the meeting, the mayor read a prepared statement that was discussing the election, saying that both candidates and their kind of camps led ugly elections and there was nastiness to go around. And then he specifically discussed why he's lost respect for April and talked about accused her of kind of vilifying city staff and undermining city staff and the city council.
Let me stop you?
Yeah.
Have you ever seen that?
No.
Have you heard about it?
No, I can't say that I have. I obviously, as the news and politics reporter, I've worked closely with all of the council members and I've spoken to them on numerous occasions. I've been to events they've been having. I've seen them in public and spoken with them, council meetings. And not once have I seen this. I've heard people talking about it, but I've never seen it or seen real evidence of it.
Okay.
I think that
Which doesn't mean it's not happening. It just means we're not
I haven't seen it. And I think that, to an extent, undermining could mean disagreeing to some of the council eyes. But like I said, I don't, I've never seen her undermine or vilify anybody in city staff or council members. And one of the other things that he touched on was he claimed that she kind of mobilizes her supporters to, or at least has her supporters do stuff that she wants. And she adamantly denied that. And she said that her her supporters are going to do what they want. She's acting as a council member. They're acting as members of the community. And she's not telling them to do anything. And once again, I've never seen any instances of her kind of directing people to act on her behalf or anything like that, that's based on like campaigning. Throughout the whole campaign, I never saw her say to any of her supporters or have any of her supporters say things or do things on behalf of her.
So we will say, from what I have seen, her supporters are, I don't want to say rabid, because that sounds bad.
Yeah, no.
They are
Passionate. They her supporters have been a driving voice for issues that she believes in and her campaign.
They are big squeaky wheel people. You know, squeaky wheel gets the grease. Like they, they are adamant. They are fervent. They are, not all of them. I mean, not all of them, because I, throughout the campaign, I talked to a lot of people, as I know a lot of people did. And, you know, there's some very quiet people who say, I support April because she, she doesn't just rubber I mean, she used the phrase rubber stamp, I think, in some of her ads, but I heard other people say it too. She doesn't just, you know, say whatever everybody else says.
Yeah.
But let's, 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 let's not go through point by point what April has done and has not done. Let's talk a little bit about how it looks in the paper this week, because already, already people are upset with us. So yay, winning at journalism again.
So yeah, I mean, we we decided that the best thing to do would be, since at the meeting, the mayor read his statement and then immediately adjourned the meeting and the council members walked out. April didn't really have a chance to say anything, or she was kind of just hit with this and then pretty much couldn't address it until the next council meeting, unless she wanted to address it online or something. So you gave her a call and you asked her, you said that you, we wanted to give her a chance to respond or at least talk about it. And we decided that we would publish his statement to give context to her statement and her statement to give context to his statement. And then you wrote publisher's note to
Right.
Give further context.
So it actually happened that before I had the chance to reach out to Sam, he emailed it to me and said, I didn't really get to finish it last night. I didn't see where that much was left out, but so, you know, he had given us his, but I had already reached out to April and said, I would like to give you a chance to respond. And that isn't about me or you or anybody at all inside this office feeling like we like April or we thought Sam was wrong. It's that, you know, this is something big that happened at city council. And the best thing, the best way we can report on some of these things is to just quote them rather than try and summarize what happened. And so we've already heard from somebody who says, well, you're just going to let him, you know, you're letting him spread his vitriol now in your newspaper. Well, you know, the one thing we all have to remember is that just because you think it's vitriol doesn't mean everybody does. And just because he thinks April is a bully doesn't mean that everybody does.
Yeah.
And if we really want to be impartial, and I tried to get this through in my pub note, if we had just published Sam's Mayor's Corner, which was essentially only his speech, that would have been incredibly unfair to April. And if we had only published April's half, the people who hadn't heard Sam's speech, because that's the only way you can do it, right? Sam, Sam read it. So you can hear about it on Facebook, which is super not accurate. That is about as accurate as asking your dog what happened at city council. Or you can watch it on the city's website. But most people are not going to do that. We have a lot of people in this city who don't even go to our website.
And we did link, we did link the clip on our
We linked the clip. We linked Sam's rhetoric to April's and April's rhetoric to his. So it wasn't as though it was even presented one sided and there, but there's no other way to tell people something big and something ugly happened at city council. And I don't think there's any denying that was big and ugly.
Yeah, I think
So
I think you touched on it well in your publisher's note when you said that it's like, we've said it throughout the election, but it's not our job to take sides. It's our job to present information. So
If somebody says something ugly and I, on a, and I talked about this because you and I, you helped me work through some of my own feelings as I worked on the pub note. Like what you see in the paper is not the first draft of what I write.
Not even.
No, but I've got to, I've got to get through it. And you know, regardless, I do feel like as, as a voter, as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a citizen, I feel like this is ridiculous. I feel like the fact that we are now using the dais to talk about what other people have done wrong isn't serving. It doesn't mean Sam was right. It doesn't mean Sam was wrong. But my concern as a human is when do we get back to working on things that serve the people who live here and the businesses and the community? And that's what I'm worried that we're going down a bad road.
I agree, especially considering that the discussion directly prior to that was talking about decorum and rules in city council. And they discussed how important it was to focus on the issues and focus on the work of council and working together and allowing things to be voted on more freely and allowing people to talk about stuff more freely. And I mean, we've seen in the area, I believe it was Clearwater, investors are pulling out of Clearwater because of turmoil in the local politics. The implications of this go beyond just issues within the city council. It goes into the city and businesses in the city and
Well, it's not even that. We're not, in a global perspective, we're not a small town. We're 12,530 some odd people, right? So really, but for Pinellas County, we're a small town. It's not just the global, not just the financial and economic possible impact. As people are there to think about investing and they see this and they're like, this council doesn't have their shit together. Maybe I shouldn't try. I mean, we already get enough complaints about community development and code enforcement for new businesses. You don't want an investor to see this. But it's more, you don't just worry about investors. You worry about somebody's at that meeting and they see the mayor say this and they had no issue with the mayor, but they do happen to support April. Or maybe they didn't necessarily support April, but they didn't see this behavior. And so now when they see somebody who supported Sam, that colors their view. I mean, same thing, you know, if somebody, somebody sees April, you know, I can't say I've seen her at the meetings be unpleasant to anybody. But, you know, now she was, she was in a situation as Sam was reading this, I watched her and she was like, what have I done, Sam? And she did get, and I don't know that it would have been any different, but she was very assertive with him.
Yeah.
And there are people who are going to look at her and be like, oh, you know, whether we want to say it or not, you see a guy do it and it's okay, but you see a woman do it and what a bitch, right?
But I mean, like, in her situation, it was, I mean, Sam talked about bullying and how the words bully have, the word bully has been used about the council for not supporting April and kind of, in a way, going, ganging together and moving on to her opponent. And he turned that around and saying that her supporters have been bullies. But in a way, I can understand where she feels like she is kind of a victim of these battles between her supporters and the council, because throughout the election, all of the possible kind of, all of the things that were brought to us by Tom Bixler's campaign were brought to us by the campaign or the campaign manager, some supporters.
It was Alex Dunsing. I'll use the name. We've used his name before.
Whereas with April's campaign, it was her supporters. It was never her.
People. It was, it was maybe once the same person. And that's, 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 that's the rub is that either you have to believe that, so the way I see that, either these people are acting independently or they are meeting independently of April and doing this because they want to. Or April is such a shrewd mastermind, so amazingly brilliant that she has somehow bent all these people who do not have freedom of thought or freedom of understanding to her will to, and I just don't see that level of political bad caving happening here. I mean, I think these people really believe, I think that April's I think that April is more responsive than some other people on council. And I appreciate that. I don't know where, the problem is, I don't know her tactics. And I want to lead, I want to leave us with this. We gave, you gave, the Gabber gave, everybody who endorsed Tommy over April space to say, why? Why did you endorse? And that would have been a perfect time to say, I don't like how she treats city staff. I don't think there's a spirit of collaboration. I think that she's a bully. And to a person, not a single one of them said it. What they said was, what did they say?
We just like Tommy more.
We just like Tommy better. And I mean, so if there's this bullying, expose it. Show it to us. We'll report on it. And that's kind of where I've come down on it. And I know we're running out of time.
That's not to say that we're hoping for it.
No, no.
Definitely not.
But I would love, I would love if there's a city council, because city councils by charter are not supposed to speak to anybody other than charter. They're not supposed to direct anybody other than charter staff. So if she is violating the charter, go on the record. Tell us about it. But nobody will do that. And that makes our job really hard. It's hard for us to present an issue fairly if you're not going to give us the information.
And I just think that despite the issues that we've seen with city council throughout the election and also the other night, we, as most people, want what the rest of the city of Gulfport wants. And it's a council that works together, a council that works for the city and that wants to better the community.
You know what I'm going to say? When mom and dad are fighting, no one's taking care of the house.
Well, speaking of bettering the community, we'll be right back with our assistant editor, Cameron Healy, to talk about some fun community events that happened right over the weekend here on WGAB, the Gabcast.
High five for your political coverage. Get that.
The Gabber Newspaper? Yeah, we go there.
Welcome back to WGAB, the Gabcast, a Gabber Newspaper production. Once again, I'm Patrick and I'm sitting here with
I'm Cameron and I'm back. I'm here.
What do you do here, Kim?
I'm the assistant editor of the newspaper and I just took over Kathy's seat. It's a little warm. She was, she was sitting here for a minute. So I'm here to talk about art, guys. We had a really eventful and artful weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a lot of art.
Yeah. So I was fortunate enough to check out this art gallery on Gulfport Boulevard. Grounded Gallery held a Earth Day mural painting event on the 7th. So the owner, how he decided to invite anybody in the community to help paint this mural on the side of the wall. So he had about like 30 people
Wow.
Come by, like, some people like came, stayed the whole time, or some people just like showed up and left.
Put a couple.
So yeah, it was just a little bit of help to make a beautiful scenic visual for Earth Day.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it was really awesome. I got to go see it for a bit. He had most of it done
Oh, wow.
when I showed up, which was about like one o'clock ish.
When he started?
He started at eight. So eight in the morning to six at night. He had a bunch of people help him paint this. So what happened was, so Howe is an artist and he also owns the gallery. And he showcases international artists and teaches art classes in the gallery.
Okay.
He does group and individual classes and at home classes. So he invited all of his students to help him design this Earth Day mural. They made a example canvas and went with that to the property owner and was like, hey, can we?
I thought he owned the gallery.
Somebody owns the building.
Oh, okay.
Like the plaza.
Okay.
So he, yes, he owns the gallery that is leased out.
Okay.
Yes, anyways. So he had to get that approved to make sure that this wall is somewhere he can paint, you know? So he got this Earth Day mural approved and him and his students got to brainstorming and made this design. And it was really, really cool. If you haven't seen the photo, it's actually of a sunset on the water with a globe on the side with like sky, a city skyline with like bright purples and yellows. And then there's a long palm tree that goes across the whole painting. And then there's three white pelicans flying in like the sky of it. And it's very pretty. It's very vibrant and colorful. And I feel like that's exactly what Gulfport is. So it was really cool to see a new painting in Gulfport, honestly. And it's very much Gulfport.
Yeah, the photos are really cool and I want to go see it. It's a really cool mural.
Yeah. And the, and the gallery is really cool too. He has awesome paintings in there. And I really liked the mural. It was awesome. And seeing all the kids too, because they're like young, they're young artists. They
Wasn't it interesting, I saw you said something about like the colors were split up in a way where
True, yeah. So he, to make it accessible for people to just show up and paint, he made it a large paint by number
Oh, that's cool.
kind of mural. So every section had a number which was associated with a color. So if you were at the event, you could walk up to the table and look at, like, a blue is like two or something like that. So he had it, so you could just do that and everybody just did it in sections. And yeah, it was really cool to see that, because one kid was working on the, on the water part. And then there was some kids working on the greenery and other people working on the sunset. And so, yeah, he just sketched it all out in the morning. I don't know how you can like make something so small in proportion to like the wall and make it actually accurate. I don't know. That's crazy stuff to me.
Yeah, I can't, a kid do, I couldn't even paint by numbers. I couldn't stay within, I couldn't even stay within the lines. I promise you.
Paint by numbers is so fun. So I would have loved to do that. But I wasn't able to. I just showed up and saw it and I had nice shoes on and I didn't want to get them painted. So, but it was really nice to see a little community event. He was super grateful for everybody that showed up and
I'm sure the people were happy to get out and do some art.
Oh, absolutely. When I was there talking with him and just watching everybody paint, there were a lot of people that were walking by or showing up, just saying like, this guy's awesome. This mural is awesome. This is such a great idea. And he definitely got more responses from people later after it was done, because he finished it in one day. They all finished it that Sunday. So that was awesome. And yeah, so he just really wanted it to be something that can represent Earth Day and that coming up on, I think it's the 22nd.
Yeah.
And that's something we can celebrate all the time. And I don't know. He said something to me that he wanted everybody to know that this is for Earth Day and that we need to be together and do good so we can save the earth for the future. And I was like, that's really cute. I love that.
Especially for being able to kind of put that in a visual form through art, you know? Instead of just saying it, giving people a way to look at something and feel that, you know?
Yeah.
It's very cool.
Obviously, we want the world to be happy and healthy and
Yeah.
It was a cute little visual. So yeah, that was what happened this weekend in Gulfport.
That wasn't the only thing that happened this weekend.
Oh, of course not. Nothing
Art, I mean, art focused.
Yeah, there's a bunch of art. So
There was a big art event on Friday. They had the In Plain Sight event right here in, at the North End Tap House. Well, it was actually all throughout downtown. But there was the In Plain Sight art event. That's plain spelled P-L-E-I-N. Not plain like you, like a plain bagel. Because it was celebrating plain air painting, which is a unique, it, it sounds like normal, but it's painting outside. It's, it sounds basic, but most people paint in the comfort, in the comfort of their home or in a studio. And this event is all about going outside and painting what's in front of you. So there were 12 paintings that were submitted to, it was run by the Gulfport Merchants Chamber in partnership with the North End Tap House to host. But there were 12 paintings that were all submitted. And all of the paintings had to be done within a certain time limit. They all had to be done within Gulfport and they all had to be done outside. So all the paintings are kind of Gulfport inspired. There's a painting of Gordon McFly. That's the name, right?
Yeah.
There's paintings of alleyways and colorful houses, paintings of the, of the bay out there and just all kinds of different stuff. And there were at, it was right before the First Friday Art Walk. So the monthly event where artists will set up their art to be sold and kind of just be around the city. And right before that, they judged the 12 paintings and there was a Best in Show. Sorry for all the flies. I don't know if you can see that, but there's a bunch of flies.
Little love bugs everywhere.
There was a Best in Show Award, second place award and a merit award. And the Best in Show went to Janie Haskins.
Nice.
She painted this beautiful picture of a alleyway and there's some colorful houses and it's just a beautiful sunny, very Gulfport, Florida just idea. And she got $300 for that as a cash prize. And the second place went to Nancy Poucher. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. I actually got to speak with Nancy a little bit as she was setting up a stand to talk, to show off their other art. And her piece was, what was her, her piece was, there was like the bay and the sun was going down and it was between some trees. It was a very, just a very beautiful landscape. And then there was also the merit award that went to Cedar Kindy. And she painted, her artwork was titled Tied Up For Work. And it was kind of boats during low tide, kind of washed up on the beach. Tide as in tide, like the ocean. It was very cool. And I actually spoke with Nancy and Cedar. And we talked about, Nancy runs Gulfport In Plain Air Painters.
Yeah, I've seen her like just set up around town.
Every, every Wednesday morning, they go out and they paint somewhere. If you want to paint with them, they don't have any like requirements to join. Just check their Facebook where they're going to be. All skill levels, just show up and paint. They're very inclusive and they just want more people to, to try the way that they paint. But along with that kind of contest side of it, there was also a bunch of vendors that were set up along Beach Boulevard and they were artists that weren't involved with the competition, but they were involved with the event. So there was artwork, there was paintings, there was, I bought jewelry. I don't want to flip you guys off. I bought a ring. And I bought a ring for my girlfriend and a necklace. I bought some, there's like woodwork pieces. There was a Cosmic Crafts, yeah, Cosmic Crafts, they make, they take like pieces of wood and they burn them to have like etchings of photos and stuff. And there was one that looked like my childhood dog, so I got that. But there was every, there was clothes, there was people selling all kinds of stuff. And it was very, it was a mini little market here, like for artists.
I love First Friday. That one's good.
Instead of just like goods and stuff, they were selling art and their, their art. And it was really cool. It definitely, everybody involved had the feeling of like, this is just celebrating an art forum that so many people practice. And there's a name, like In Plain Air. I don't paint, but anytime I, like, I'm a musician, anytime I try to like write music or something, I do it outside because it's just like a different environment. You feel more, there's more going on. But specifically for painters or art, like visual artists, I didn't know that In Plain Air was a specific type of painting or
Oh, plain, plain air, yeah.
Yeah, plain air painting is like different from other forms of painting. And it's like, I'm sure a lot of people do only paint like that and don't understand that there's a specific name for that. And there's groups of people that just do that.
Oh, it's so cool. And I feel like it's very, you have to have an eye for it, you know? It's very difficult to like make it look realistic.
Yeah.
And like keep the visual, the way that you first started painting it. Because if something happens, like somebody walks away and they were sitting there for hours and you're like, dang, I would just
Well, that's also the thing is like you're painting a sunset.
Yeah.
You have a short amount of time until the sun goes down, you know?
And they're just like
You can't replicate the sunset tomorrow. It's a different sunset. So it's, it's really cool. You can't replicate the sunset tomorrow. It's a different sunset. So it's, it's really cool. Um, uh, I was talking to Cedar, said that everybody should try it because it's just kind of giving you a new, you're seeing new colors and new, you're hearing new sounds and you're activating your senses beyond just painting what you see or painting what a lot of people will paint off of a photograph or just paint something in their mind. And that's the way they paint. But when you do it outside in a live environment and you're painting a landscape that's in front of you, you're engaging more than just your eyes, you know? If you hear something, you can put that in the painting in some way.
Yeah.
If you hear birds chirping, you can put birds flying overhead and there's stuff like that where you just can't, it almost makes painting something in plain air makes it more everything. You can like, you can impart more senses when you're actually there, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's a immersive experience for sure.
Yeah, definitely. Um, yeah. I, I'm excited for some stuff coming up this weekend too. The Blues Fest in St. Pete.
Yeah.
The Pepper Fest in Pinellas Park and all kinds of stuff. And especially, I'm excited for next week's city council meeting.
Yay, city council!
See how that goes. Um, just to remind everybody, before you write up a public commentary or anything, just check out the Gulfport City Council Rules and Policies. There are rules and what you can say and what the council or the mayor can say to, if they feel you're acting out of line, they can ask you to stop or have you removed. So review the city council rules and policies and say everything you need to say. Just make sure that you're able to say it. Um, and that your words get across. So thank you so much for listening to WGAB, the Gabcast, a Gabber Newspaper production. And we'll be back next week.
Bye.